And then on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of March, we dealt with oral submission through the virtual platform. And then, as I've indicated, we are now in the third phase, which is starting here in Limpopo today. We will go to all the provinces, the nine provinces of South Africa. It will end sometime in June. And then, as I've indicated, we are now in the third phase, which is starting here in Limpopo today. We will go to all the provinces, the nine provinces of South Africa. It will end sometime in June. This bill seeks to repeal Act Number Sixty-three of nineteen-seventy-five, the Expropriation Act. This act, this bill seeks to repeal, is an act that was there even before our constitution, even before our freedom, which means that it predates our constitution. It does not talk to what the constitution, the government of the day, talks to. It is what we can say. It is an act of the old apartheid government. And to this bill again, it needs to address so that all the expropriating authorities have way of doing the expropriation. For example, this act allows the government to expropriate. And then, the land that has been expropriated, it should expropriate it at a market value. And then, that does not talk to the constitution, because our constitution says just and equitable value. And lastly, we want you, as the people of South Africa, as the people of Limpopo, to have a say in the government that you have elected, in the representative that you have nominated to serve in parliament, to make laws, so that you have your say, whether you want to support this bill or you don't want to support this bill. With those few words, members of the community of the Ma'kosh, we say, the chiefs that are with us, the leaders of all the political parties that ask, our communities, our union reps, and every stakeholder that we have here in Toyaado today, we welcome you in this meeting. We want you to feel free to express your views. We will also allow you to speak in any of the eleven official languages that we have in South Africa. We will allow only three minutes for each speaker. When we have pointed that you have to speak, we'll allow you only three minutes. Make sure that whatever you do, you will do it within the three minutes. We will definitely stop you when you exceed the three minutes. And then, now we will allow the honourable members, who are members of our portfolio committee, to introduce themselves. We'll start at the far end.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Samantha Grey-Murray. I'm a member of the Democratic Alliance in Parliament, and I live in the eastern Cape in Ichafo in Kwafo.net.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Madeleine Hicklin. I'm a member of the Democratic Alliance, and I live in Cape Town, but I am originally from Johannesburg in Khaating.
Good evening, everyone. This is Matha Pelosiwisa, a member of parliament, representing the FFA, by Kimbalingabzulona, in the Mradawa Committee.
I'm a chairman, Tim Mashele.
Good morning. Member of the ANC from Pumalanga.
Sanbonani. I come from Elphazaga Matebula. I'm a member of the parliament. I'm a member of the African National Congress. I'm a member of Pumala.
Good morning, everyone present. I'm Sharon Fenscalfe, member of parliament, originally from up in the northern Cape. And I'm glad to be here today with you.
Good morning, Sanbonani. My name is Wayne Fring. I am from KwaZulu-Natal, a member of parliament, representing the African Christian Democratic Party. Good to see you all this morning. Thank you.
Amongst us, thank you honourable members, amongst us, we have the speaker of Vembe municipality who has joined us. Is that the mic is not here? Okay, she can just mention her name? Okay, I am not sure whether, don't you have other honourable members? Or maybe councillors of the municipality that we are in? There, there, there she is. You can introduce yourself, ma'am. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, no, she is not one of the leaders of the municipality. The ground rules again, that side. Maybe take ten there. Come to this side, take ten, and then ten at the back. But it's three minutes, and when you are appointed, the security is going to assist us. And then, remember, when you have to speak, you have to introduce yourself. Tell us, I am Nolita Njobongwana. Maybe I'm from this political party or I'm from this farmers' association and all that. And then you present your view within three minutes. Then let me then point those that are raising their hands. We will try to ensure that everyone speaks. Okay. Oh, I didn't see you. Number seven. Number eight. Number nine in the corner. In the corner next to the mic. Number ten. No, the one with glasses like me, number ten. Can we take that first? Part is going to be number eleven. The white shirt, they are going to be number eleven. Number twelve. Again, no, we're going to come at the back. Number thirteen, we are true with this part, ne? You are number thirteen. We are true with this part, then we'll go, we'll come to this side. It's only three minutes.
I, Ngora Grace Ma'osie, representing the African National Congress, wish to state that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation of such compensation is that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustices and dispossession. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution. Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to governments to give effect to land reform and redistribution clause code. We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause, the Expropriation Bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the Expropriation Bill Twenty Twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property forced dispossession. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land, by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmark reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation, the expropriating authority is the state, since the bill is about public interest and public purpose, and must determine those may be paid, that is clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C. That this is a function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they will approach the court. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. I thank you.
I am Korumbi Nemawo, representing Progressive Professional. We support the explosion without compensation bill because of the following. We are saying that we support this bill because the majority of South Africans have suffered a lot, if only own thirty percent of the land, of which the rest was not for us, as black South Africans. Therefore, we are supporting the ruling party, the African National Congress, that this bill be passed. And that all the land which was taken from us black people, they returned without compensation. I thank you.
Just before the next speaker speaks, can you please try to raise your voice too, especially when you tell us your name and the party, or the organization that you are coming from? We are recording and we want to ensure that we have captured you clearly. Thank you.
I'm a member of the African National Congress. The ANC supports the expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of this process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustices and the dispossession of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states, I quote, "Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to governments to give effect to land reform and redistribution clause code." We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause, the Expropriation Bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the Expropriation Bill Twenty Twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievances of land and property forced dispossession. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land, by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriating authority is the state, since this bill is about public interest and public purpose, and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause E. That is a function of government, not the court. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be the ones to make a determination on compensation or no compensation. I thank you.
I am Masutarrendani, representing the ANC State Dutch. The ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just, equitable process to restore dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For that, the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice, dispossession, and black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution states, "Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to governments to give effect to land reform and redistribution." We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic, the property and clause, the Expropriation Bill in the draft law of position. We support Expropriation Bill Twenty Twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance and land on property forced dispossession. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedure of expropriation of property, including land, by organs of the state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just equitable in terms of constitution in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that expropriating authority is that, since in this bill is about public interest, public purpose, and must determine those instance where possession may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C. That is the functions of the government, not the court. If any has grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be to make determinations of compensation or no compensation.
My name, I'm Esther Makumi San. I'm Esther Sokowkwa Makumi San. As the ANC, we are supporting the appropriation of the as the ANC supports expropriation of the property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation such as without compensation is that of the process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and dispossession of the black majority. Also, mutual and opportunity to unlock growth, distribute and promote the socio-economic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land question and build the productive access for our people, especially women. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states extra. Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to the government to give effect to the land reform and redistribution. We support that line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause. The expropriation bill is that, the draft law and general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of the property and the land without compensation. We support the Expropriation Bill Twenty Twenty so as to redistribute property and the land to address the century-old and national grievance.
Apology, time is up.
Program Director, without having that, I will say thank you very much, and I will submit this speaker's note. I've signed that, my name and put signature. I support this, I submit this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Program Director and all protocol observed. I, Wanderanit Nawonga-Steeve, am representing the ANC. That ANC supports our expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to the property and the land, that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land question and build
The ANC program provide a way to address the land question and build a productive asset for our people. We are guided by the fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states, in extract, it reflected as follows, expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that, in line with the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa and the property clause, the Expropriation Bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the Expropriation Bill twenty twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the century-old national governance of land and property forced dispossession. We support, as the ANC, the framework in the bill, in line with the Constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including the land, by organ of state. We support, as the ANC, in particular clause twelve C, which allow where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the Constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution.
Ima.
Thank you very much.
Ima. Our team is saying that, they still can't hear you. If you have written something, can you please write your name? Only those that are speaking. But also, I want to indicate, we have many people out there who also like to come in. What we are going to do, as we have pointed ten hands this side, we agree that we're going to come here, will ask security out of those that are outside. They must then choose ten that are going to come inside, only to speak. So that's what we also going to do, will choose ten outside, they will only come to speak, they won't come to sit. I don't think it's going to be fair even to us to say, all those that are inside must go out, because there are people out there, whereas maybe they came earlier on. But we'll allow those that are outside to speak, but we'll only choose then. That process is going to be done by our team from Parliament, to ensure that even those that are outside, all the parties that are out there are represented, not only a single party that is out there. So we are going to continue with the team that we have identified, and come and identify this team. Whilst we are identifying at the back there, our team will assist us by identifying ten. If the people that want to speak out there are more than ten, we will bring them in groups of ten, maybe say twenty, first ten, and then after, we select another ten. Thank you.
Nendiba Fuwo, Dr. J.G. Chiflaro. I'm a royal leader by virtue of birth. I'm representing Chivase Traditional Council and the Vembe MDM Structures. I don't want to repeat what the ANC has already submitted, but I just want to emphasize that we support the bill as the traditional leaders and MDM structures in Vembe, particularly Chapter Five. We want to emphasize that this bill is overdue, mindful of the time. I think I will pause here. Thank you.
I'm Jigwilt Nwanga, representing the ANC State that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice in dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC program provide a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states, expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that, in line with the Constitution of the Republic and property clause, the Expropriation Bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, appropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the Expropriation Bill twenty twenty so as to distribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance and land and property forced dispossession. We support the framework in the bill, in line with the Constitution to guide the process and procedures of expropriation of property, including land and organs state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allow where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of Constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose, and must be determined those instances where compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where no compensation will be paid clause twelve C. That is function of the government, not the court, and if anyone has grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be one to make determination of compensation or no compensation. Thank you.
Nda. Nendisa Damu Amasuta, Mutiketi, Moruane Wadi Horo, African National Congress. Ya ndichikori homu rayo, ndidoba ngachi venda chavshungutitna nimo Africa. Nika siya menganya muzimu tabu Europa na oth. Ndichikori homu rayo, nikobona uchiko bawo zurazawo dizeze, ba usikisa zone, ba uruane basuani ngayo parliamentini, bachi kuama ngazo ujiashango namina zot, nikopandikosiri bua ndikotika da ze, ba rangapanda, ba konotosikisa zone katina conference ya di horo di uruana da ANC, zea konotosikisa zone usubezori, ma vurdo jia, ruse na na ndiliso, nanchi ngochina musibashi dia kava rema bungo jia unandiliso, ndonendikotika zadelo, stukutuku rangandizizi. Nda.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. My name is Lataani Saddam Jeffrey Masuta. I'm the ward councillor from Ward Three, Andamakado Municipality. My submissions are as follows. As the ANC, we support this bill because it will benefit us as the community. And I pledge my support to Parliament that they must pass this bill as is. The land must be given back to the rightful owners who were dispossessed, so that they can have control and also participate in the economy. Those who stole the land from us must give it back for free, the same way they took it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Program Director. My name is Mielen Chauke, from the African National Congress. I'm here to support the Expropriation Bill. The land should not only be expropriated to address the historical injustice, but also as a necessary condition to increase agricultural production, economic growth and development to reduce the unacceptable levels of inequality, unemployment, and poverty in South Africa. Historical evidence shows that countries which undertook the expropriation of land grew their agricultural output. The state should expropriate land in order to increase the budget of state for social economic development purposes. For an example, to fight against crime, education, health, and also job creation. The public ownership of land enables people through the state democratic direct and influence land allocation and use for their own socio-economic development. Land redistribution can play significant role to reduce inequality, unemployment, and poverty. For instance, a typical example, the Pulukwane Municipality or Makado Municipality, they are failing to make a proper development, because the owner of the land, who is occupying the land, that is currently not even being used. The municipality is failing to trace that person, because he's not staying in South Africa, he's staying in Holland, but owning a land in South Africa. And even if they find that person who got a title deed through corruption, he demand lot of money to the municipality or government, so that we can able to make a development, which is very much wrong and honorable. So mine, it was simple to say, let's take the land, and the land must belong to the state, and the state must control the land, even those who are staying in rural or in urban areas must able to get title deed.
Thank you, Program Director. My name is Mponi Matandani, from the biggest party, the EFF. My submission is expropriationed. I also reaffirm that the expropriation of land without compensation is the only way. All land must belong to the state. I thank you. Okay. Vitora Minani Langandrus, in Amaluleki, ni imele ANC. ANC lakubona shunduti shavanua, ka kuvayoa na chivuiseriwa, nakubona land i transferiwa kuyaka stage, na ti processesinkwati letinga tava tika ti endiwa in line to the Constitution. Ikuya, iti guideline letinga tini kiwaka fifty-fourth conference. So as an ANC supporter, be late, ya expropriation of land and property without a compensation. I thank you.
Thank you very much. The ANC, we are here on behalf of our people, want to see the dignity of African people brought back to them. We want to see the land which was stolen, returned to them. We support all the processes that will ensure that the bill is finalized speedily. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Alfios Mamafa, from the Economic Freedom Fighters. This committee was here before, talking about the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution. And today, we are here again, still talking about the same thing. And today you are coming with a bill. I think this committee should just go back and make sure that section twenty-five of the Constitution is amended, then you can come back with the bill. How do you start from moving when we were not, we were here, we wanted section twenty-five to be amended, and today you are here, you are coming with the bill. Go, make sure that you reaffirm the land expropriation without compensation, then, so that all land should just become to the state. If you come up with this bill before the amendment of Constitution, then we're just playing, who's fooling who here? Let's not fool each other. We want amendment of the Constitution. Without amendment of the Constitution, what are we doing with the bill? Let's get the amendment first here, because our people are suffering, they were here. You let them spend nearly every time, we're coming to talk about one thing. Go back, amend that Constitution. Your presence here doesn't worth anything. Go back and amend the Constitution twenty-five of the Constitution. Thank you.
Ndiwa, nengamazina ndifi Eldamakeisha, ndibama sparanu amusina, ndichikovakali horola, Economic Freedom Fighter. Nde imafa noni ndichikodo ambaye zuziteverao, ndichikori parliamente iko uyapano laburaru, rasunune ndichikori parliamente ndanichikombeleba umele murau, batoa mengoyo amend section twenty-five, bakono dangabili ngamurau. Ndodobe apundiri, kabe weba rangapanda waborine, rinereka di imasa EFF riri, xango murau, usinamba de, ndadoba apunda ri xango elinuni, kali umele murau, aningaye kamubusowashu, ndoribu.
Thank you so much, Chairperson. My name is Makeisha El. I'm a PR councillor for the EFF. My submissions are as follows. It is for the third time, now that you are coming back to us, to do this public consultation. And as the EFF, we are still saying, first, the first step is to amend section twenty-five of the Constitution, and then the bill later. And we are still echoing the very same sentiments, that bring back our land without any compensation. And... and that the land should fully belong to the state. I thank you.
Thank you to the members that have raised their issues. We'll then, and just to correct something, this is for the first time that this portfolio committee is coming here. You may see faces that were part of the ad hoc committee, but the portfolio committee of Public Works is coming for the first time. As we have indicated, that we will choose ten here and then we'll choose another ten here and then after that, ten at the back and then we'll allow ten, those that are outside, to come in. So we're coming to this side now to choose our ten from this side.
Tangu chinenangatwa amba choneni chaori, ni rau thoma, rnerichiko utapanu, nichko tokakuru reyuzla zezza suki swa. Van gadiwabo na mingwe mirado yashu afanoni, kavungwe burumeroa e adho damura, kachinwachipiga. Pezir, rneriko utapanu, rau thoma. Zenezo, sa zenda amba muthomoni angeni, noretojya ba fumi ngangeno, na ba fumi ngangeno, na ba fumi mura. Na imwe fumiyo no ba nda, zenezo, ngangeno ropeza, rereko dangaa angeno.
Okay, number one, next to you. Yeah, number two, next to you, yeah. So we finish up on that side. Number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, yes. Number ten, number eleven, number twelve, mama, yeah. Thirteen, you, fourteen, that one, fifteen. And the last one, okay, sixteen, seventeen, yeah, yeah, you are number seventeen. We're still coming to the back. But we are through with this side, we are through with this side, then we'll be coming to the back. Those that came later, us having identified people earlier on, we will take you later on, if you allow us. Please, we'll take you later on. We had already pointed people on this side, but I understand some of you came in when we have already pointed people. We will deal with you later on.
Kaba tbozuranga angeno, vane ba wangu, van gawa busika ulenga, kana bachi kotoo amba. Sa wunga ropeza ngapa nuni, ripenichpinga chaori yenga angeni, redoromuse ropeza, rako no dova apu raviya kabe yu, nusechika dretende.
Thank you. Remember, you have only three minutes. Please identify yourself and tell us which part.
Tauruse, bambe na zoriba vaka lihoroli bio, lasukisa nambuno zabo, rereko nganera pan. Session may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation authority is the state since this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must be determined those instances where company may be paid by clause twelve A and where no compensation will be paid clause twelve C, that is a function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the courts and courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation.
Thank you, program director, and all the committees. We're just here today, all protocol observed. I'm Ramboani Ar from African National Congress. I'm here to do the slate of the appropriation bill, B two-three stroke twenty-twenty. The ANC supports appropriate property and land as just an equivalent or equitable process to restore dignity of our people in addressing both access to property. Of such without conservation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustices and dispossession of black majority. It is also a watch or a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets and promote socio-economic transformation. And the ANC government provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-two, fifty-four national conference resolution, which states appropriations of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that in line with the constitution of the republic and the property clause, the appropriate bill is the draft law of general application that will allow under certain circumstances appropriation of land, of property and land without compensation. We support the appropriate bill twenty-twenty so as to redistribute properly and land to address the central all national governments, the national grievances of land and property forces disposition. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedure to approach of property, including land of organs of state. We support in particular classes, classes twelve C, which allows where appropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and that in public interest for property and land in a group for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the proportion of authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and the public purpose and must be determined those where compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where compensation will be paid.
Thank you. I'm Rachel Ralipa Damarange, representing the ruling party, the African National Congress. The ANC supports expropriation of property and land as just an equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access, dignity of our people in addressing both access, both access. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by the fifty-fourth national conference resolution states that expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that in line with the constitution of the Republic of South Africa and the property clause. The expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty-twenty as to redistribute property and land to address the central all national grievance of land and property force disposition. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedure of expropriation of property, including land by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of constitution and in the, sorry, in the interest of, in the interest for property and land earmarked for socio-reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must be determined those instances where compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where no compensation will be paid clause twelve C. This is a function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the courts. Courts cannot be the one to make determination of compensation or no compensation.
Good morning. My name is Sowird Lakhanyana from the African National Congress. As the ANC, we stand here to support the spirit and the framework of the expropriation bill. Number two, the African National Congress understands that there is a separate process for the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution of the republic. Number three, we think they understanding that expropriation without compensation must happen in the interest of public policy. We submit that the bill must be kept in such a way that it is able to address the historical injustices of the past. It must address the class, race, gender and special disparities that are synonymous with the apartheid rule. And thirdly, it must help us to drive our program of socio-economic transformation to develop and grow the South African economy, but not only just economic development and economic growth, but an inclusive economy that reflects the identity, it reassets the identity of all South Africans. It helps us to build national unity and cohesion. And very lastly, that we want the expropriation authority to be vested in the state.
Okay, Ndolivua, thank you very much. I'm Matuka Rosin Tundeani, representing the ANC. The ANC supports appropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that appropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for the people. We are gathered by our fifty-four national conference resolution, which states as follows. Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that in line with the constitution of the republic and the property clause. The expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow under certain circumstances, expropriation of the property and the land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty-twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the central all national grievance of land and property force disposition. We support the framework in the bill. In line with the constitution to guide the process, that procedure for appropriation of property, including land and organs of state. We support the particular clause twelve C, which allow where appropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land remarks for the socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and the public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, as a clause twelve A. And we are not, we are, compensation will be paid clause, that this is a function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, we support the time.
Thank you, Chairperson and the committee. I'm Mpumalani Magiga, representing the African National Congress. As the African National Congress, we submit that in line with the constitution of the republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We also support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for the appropriation of property, including land by organs of state. Also support, as the African National Congress, in particular clause twelve C, which allow where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest of property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We also submit that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where no compensation will, and where no compensation will be paid. This is the function of this government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, may have the right to approach the courts. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation.
Good morning to the parliamentary committee. My name is Anderson Mudunungu. I am the regional secretary of the ANC in the region. I represent the ANC. We want to welcome your presence today, particularly with the presence of the portfolio committee on public works, as they will be the ones, they will be the custodians of the expropriation bill as we support it and as gazetted in October twenty-twenty. We also want to support We also want to support the procedure in which you are using. Because we heard there was others who were attacking you as you are putting the, you know, the horse in front of the cart or the cart in front of the horse, whatever they were saying. But we want to say that you are very correct because section twenty-five subsection nine of the constitution was very clear to say that you need to pass, you know, a law of general application that is going to give, you know, impetus and framework to the land expropriation as envisaged in the constitution. We also want to say that, in terms of compensation, the executive authority, and in this instance, the Minister of Public Works, as the bill cites, should be the one that decides on the value of the payable quantum and not the judicial. Lastly, we also want to say that this is not only an act of public interest. It is not an act only of restoration of dignity. It's a key economic empowerment to the dispossessed. And we want this process to be done and dusted yesterday. It is too long. It took too long to also activate section twenty-five subsection nine. I support the bill. The African National Congress supports the expropriation bill as gazetted in October twenty-twenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Greetings to you. Greetings to you and members of the Portfolio Committee. My name is Frank Chirillo, representing ANC Wataseven branch from Makadosa region. My branch supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. We submit that, in line with the constitution of the republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty-twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievances of land and property forced dispossession. We support the bill, in line with the constitution, to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land and organs of state. And this process must be led by the executive arm of the state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socioeconomic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriating authority is the state since this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid. This is in clause twelve A. And where no compensation will be paid, under clause twelve C, that this is a function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the courts. Courts cannot be the ones to make determinations of compensation or no compensation. In conclusion, we support the work we are doing as the Portfolio Committee, and we know you are doing a sterling job, which is very stressing. Continue to do that. We support you fully. And lastly, we are saying strong actions must be taken against those who occupy land unlawfully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I am Sipo Masuka, the Chairperson of the Landless People in Libombo. I have experienced abuse and dispossession by a system which I cannot label or describe. The system in itself designed a black mind to accept to be domesticated and treated like a pet. The Black Administration Act subjected us to be human beings only when we are subjects of a particular person. We support the move by the current government to restore our dignity as human beings from many years and centuries of being treated like animals, where at the current stage, going to court, you can't carry your grave of your grandfathers and the like to a court to prove the originality of your existence in this country where you were born. I'm pleading with you parliamentarians and our current government to speed up the process in the expropriation bill. Because land dispossession and abuse does not have color, sex, or creed. Abuse in our country is happening in various forums, either from a tribalistic trend, ethnic trend, racial trend, religious trend, and the like. It is upon you and us, as the people of South Africa, to run with peace towards like the air that we breathe where there's no contestation, the water that we drink where there's no contestation, and the rain that rains on everyone. Why is it so difficult with the land where we walk on it? That those who own the land are not forever running on it, but they walk and get tired, they die, get buried, like us who are the landless people? Is it not time to speed up the process and make sure that those who died crying, abused, the cops that are lying in mortuaries, owing tribal levies and the like? Can't you speed up the expropriation bill with all the things that is trying to make sure that human beings, the majority blacks that are being abused on a daily basis, that they also feel being part of this current democratic society? Let us not politicize this thing or try to score cheap political activities on the things that is painful. There are individuals and families that are benefiting on the land. The land redistribution and restitution should face the reality that just like we are owning cars and having licenses of our vehicles, but we can't pick our cars everywhere, let the land be used also for productivity so that we fight poverty. The Land Use Management Act must cater for us also that we own the land. Parliamentarians, wake up. It can't be.
Thank you, Program Director. I'm Shonisani Sisilia Kwenda, representing the ANC. The ANC supports appropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that appropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about addressing historical injustice and the disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute access, and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by the fifty-four national conference resolution, which states that compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform. The bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, appropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty-two, redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property forced deposition. We support the framework of the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land, by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where appropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socioeconomic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriating authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and the public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C. That is a function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the courts. Courts cannot be one to make determinations of compensation or no compensation. I thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson of the session. My name is Marangechnanne, representing ANC. Much has already said. But as the ANC, we support expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about addressing historical injustice and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, distribute assets, and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by the fifty-four national conference resolution, which states: Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that, in line with the constitution of the republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft of the general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty-twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property forced disposition. We support the framework in the bill, in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including the land by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest of property and land earmarked for socioeconomic reform and distribution. We finally support that expropriating authority is the state since this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C. That is a function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the courts. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, members of parliament and all supporting committees. My name is Nemari Genichiri-Rotroza, representing the ANC. And I state that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about addressing historical injustices and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by the fifty-fourth national conference resolution, which states, I quote, "Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution." We submit that, in line with the constitution of the republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty-twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property forced disposition. We support the framework in the bill, in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socioeconomic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C. That this is the function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the courts. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. Members of parliament and support staff committee, I thank you.
Thank you, Program Director. I, Rambuda Atongosdiva-Sara, representing the ANC, state that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that expropriation of such without compensation is part of the process and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, distribute assets, and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth national conference resolution, which states: Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that, in line with the constitution of the republic of the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty-twenty so as to redistribute, so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievancy of land and property forced disposition. We support the framework... We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and for expropriation of property, including land by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution.
Nenifi Tia Tu Tuwan, no Imera Pa Utiketo Sabumtou, Ngabara Ngapandava, African National Congress. The ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. The ANC, for the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build a productive asset for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states, and I quote, open quotes, "Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution." Close quote. We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is that draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property forced disposition. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows the expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest of property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where no compensation will be paid clause twelve C. That this is a function of the government, not of the court. And if anyone has grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be ones to determine, to make determinations of compensation or no compensation. Chairperson, you will also understand that seventy-six percent of the total land audited in the Republic of South Africa is privately owned. Only fourteen percent. I thank you, Chairperson.
Time up. Thank you, Program Director. I am Netyshive Asangusiana, representing the ANC, state that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and disposition of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-four National Conference, which among the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievances of land and property forced disposition. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allow where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the expropriation authority is the state since this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where no compensation will be paid clause twelve C. That this is a function of government, not the court.
Time is up, madam.
Thank you very much to be given this opportunity. I am Kuyindama Faneza from Democratic Alliance, PR Councilor at Tula Mela. I'm here to raise the following in terms of this bill. We, as a DA, we support the bill, the need to replace the old by the new one. But we have got this certain issues that we want to raise. We are concerned that properties, public purposes, and the public interest are not sufficiently defined in this, in the bill, and it could lead to the potential explorations of the provisions of the Act by the officials and politicians. Property relates to all properties and is not limited to land. If public purposes or public interest can be showing, any properties can be exploited as it currently stands. Expropriations without compositions, however, relates purely to land. There is no need for expropriations without compositions to be legislation. In there, submissions as linked this to configuration of the property, which is unlawful. The current section twenty-five of the Constitution makes provisions for the nil compositions, nil compositions. Section twelve of three, which speaks to nil compositions, refer to the five circumstances, listens from A to E, but goes further to say, but not limited to. We believe that this opens the door to an unlimited list of circumstances where nil compositions could be offered. In particular, we object to twelve point three A, which limited to rights of the people to speculate on property. While we appreciate that land is a scare, commodity is, it is still a commodity and should be treated as such. We further object to section twelve of three C, which is identified. Thank you.
Time is up.
Thank you, Program Director. I, Rasendeza Ajutamisimelta, representing the ANC, state that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. So the ANC, the ANC said that accelerated land distribution and land reform correctly implemented will assist in stimulating economic growth and development, reducing racial and gender inequalities and transforming the lives of millions. As the ANC, accelerated land distribution and land reform is part of the wider nation building project to build a country that belongs to all and in which all South Africans, black and white, have a secure stake in our country's future. So with regards to land distribution, we said as ANC that we have to accelerate the release of the title deeds to our people in rural and urban areas. We also rapidly release of state-owned lands for developmental purposes. We further said that there must be investigation for corruption allegations on land that have been brought by the state in cases such as Malamala. And we finally said, there must be an explore in expropriation test cases. I thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson of the session. I, Mandiwana Ntakadzini Estan, representing the ANC, state that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states that "Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution." We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property forced disposition. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land by organs of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allow where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that expropriation authority is the state since this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where no compensation will be paid clause twelve C. That this is a function of the government, not the court. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. I thank you.
Thank you, Iminna Simonumtombeni, representing the African National Congress, Makados Subregion, which consists of thirty-eight words. The ANC supports appropriation of property and the land as a just and equitable process for the restore and dignity of our people in addressing both the access to property and land, and that the appropriation of such without compensation is part of the process. For the African National Congress, this is about the redressing historical injustice and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital, if not important, opportunity to unlock the growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The African National Congress program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets in our people. We are guided by the fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which is stated, let me quote, "Appropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government to give effective land reform and redistribution." Close quote. We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa and the property clause, the appropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, appropriation of property and land without compensation. We support an appropriation bill twenty twenty so as to redistribute property and land redress and century-old national grievances of land and property forced disposition. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for appropriation and property, including the land, by the organs of state. We supported a particular clause twelve C, which allow where appropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and the public interest property and land earmarked for the socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that the appropriating authority is that state since the bill is about the public interest and the public purpose and must determine those instances and compensation may be paid clause twelve A and where no compensation will be paid clause twelve C. That this is a function of the government, not the court, and if anyone has grievances, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. Thank you.
Greetings to you all. Demasiari, Neninyenge Zinmapa, no, represent the ANC. The ANC supports the expropriation of the property and land as just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the both access to property and land, and that the expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is that redressing historical injustice and disposition of the black majority. It is also a visual opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productivity assets for our people. We are guided by the fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states, "Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanisms available to government of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution." We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause. The expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, exploration of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievances of land and property force depossession. We support the framework in bill, in line with the Constitution, to guide the process and procedure for expropriation of property, including the land of organs of state. We support, in particular clause twelve C, which allows the expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of Constitution and in the public interest of property and land in mind for socioeconomic reform and redistribution. We support the expropriation authority in state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C, that is a function of government, not the court, and if any has a grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. I thank you.
I, Nchepisa Livwani, representing the ANC state that the ANC supports exploration of property and land as a just, equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that exploration of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a visual opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets, and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land questions and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states, "Exploration of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution." We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, exploration of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property force dispossession. We support the framework in the bill, in line with the Constitution, to guide the process and procedures for exploration of property, including land by organs of state. We support, in particular clause twelve C, which allows where exploration without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the Constitution and in the public interest for property and land earmarked for socioeconomic reform and redistribution. We support that the exploration authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where a compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C, that is a function of the government, that is the function of the government, not the courts, and if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. I thank you.
Greetings to you all as members of the portfolio. I'm Mr. Madawa Arun, representing the Democratic Alliance. The Democratic Alliance does not support the amendment of the Land Expropriation Bill without compensation. And the Democratic Alliance regard the land expropriation without compensation as theft, robbery, daylight robbery, and irregular. And we support the premier ball, which says, "No one may be deprived of property except in terms of the law of general application, and no law may permit arbitrary deprivation of property." We therefore don't want to go back to what happened in Zimbabwe, whereby people were chased out of their land, and they were not compensated without any cent. And therefore, the people go, the land and the country went on bankrupt. The land was not cultivated, there was no food, and people kept on jumping the fences and moving across the borders because the land were taken without compensation. We therefore regard that if anybody has got a PTO for his or her own land, if he is willing to sell it, then let it be so or be done like that regarding the proper formation or following the regular law. If I have got my own land and I'm not willing to sell it, let it be, let me keep my land. The big fish have stolen enough money now, they think of stealing your land. That should not happen, and the DA is saying it must stop immediately. This land expropriation without compensation is irregular and is regarded as theft. Stop it now. I thank you.
Thank you very much, members of Portfolio. My name is Mariba Mashudu Joseph, representing the Democratic Alliance as the chairperson, as the regional chairperson. I'm also a public representative at Vembe district. As a DA, we don't support expropriation without compensation amendment bill. We don't support this because, according to our Constitution, it states clear that that we should remain as it is because it protects our property rights. I, I, I don't understand the logic behind this amendment bill because already the Constitution does protect our property rights, and it also say that no one may deprive of property except in terms, in terms of the law of general application. So, this kind of meetings, it's like wasting, because already the Constitution allows people to expropriate using willing buyer, willing seller. There is a land which was given to the community right now as we speak, but there are people who are also selling that land again. So, so that is why I don't understand this kind of logic, because people are selling land again. There is a piece of land which is under the government. Why can't we expropriate that piece of land to our people and see if we can share with that? Because if you can check, the land that is under the government, when you go there, there is no security, everything collapsed, you know, something like that. So, it's like this thing, it's, it's, it's a system of politicians wanting to take, to grab the land. It's just for our poor people doesn't understand this logic. So, we as the Democratic Alliance, we don't support this amendment bill. Thank you.
Thank you. As we indicated earlier on, we're taking a number from this side, number from this side, going to the back now, and then after that, we'll allow ten from outside. But I would like to acknowledge the traditional royal councils that amongst us and all the royal families, the Chibase Traditional Council, I think it was represented by Doctor, but I think he has gone now. We really appreciate their presence. The chairperson, the provincial chairperson of the Economic Freedom Fighters was amongst us, Fighter Josie Butane, we appreciate your presence. The provincial secretary of the ANC who is here, who comrade Soviet Lhanyane, we appreciate your presence, leadership. And we've been joined by some of our colleagues from Parliament, though they're not serving in our committee, but they are here, Honorable Matthias and Honorable Tangweni. We're going straight to the back now, please raise your hands there at the back that I can point to you. Okay, the one next to you, yeah, is going to be number one, he must come in front, and then just in the first row is number two, yes, number three, four. Are you also coming, Budi, the one with the white t-shirt? I had not yet pointed you, but yeah, you will be number five after the lady, okay? And then who else's hand is up? Okay, number six with the, yes. And then who else's hand is up? Number seven, number eight, the two, the two next to you, seven and eight, nine, ten, I had already pointed you, I didn't point to Ustisi with the blue dress, I don't know where she was sitting. You raise your hand first, and then I point to you, and then you come in front. And I said, I'm dealing with the two blocks at the back because I had dealt with these two blocks. Yes, yeah, yeah. And then the two gentlemen up there, you, I think you're the last one, yes. We will then, if our security then can assist us, then outside, just those that will be coming in will be those that will only be speaking. Remember, it's only three minutes, you introduce yourself to us, and then you state your, and tell us which organization or political party that you're coming from, and then state your position. Thank you. It's three minutes, and we will stop you when you exit the three minutes. Thank you.
The call of the board, the national anthem of the EFF, one thirty-eight, the representative of the General Assembly of the EFF. Exploration bill must only happen after section twenty-five of the Constitution has been amended. I also reformed that the exploration of the land without composition is the only way. All land must belong to the state. Thank you, Amanda.
Greetings to the members of Parliament. My name is Lucky Baloi, representing the Economic Freedom Fighters. So, I was from the EFF, we support the expropriation of land, the expropriation bill, guided by the cardinal pillar number one of the Economic Freedom Fighters, which is the expropriation of land without compensation to equal, to equal distribution. So, we also have a worry, we also have a worry. Last time, the members of the Parliament, you were here in Venda about this hearing. So, we think you guys, you must fasten up the process, you must speed up the process. You cannot come here and waste money here at Venda about this hearing. You have been here, make sure that you go there, you go there and speed up the process. I thank you.
Thank you, Program Chair. My name is Mana Galilian. I come from Vembe, Tulamela ward, twenty-three. I'm a member of Limpopo Provincial Legislature and an EFF member in good standing. Allow me to thank you, the Portfolio Committee, for coming down from the Parliament to the regions, hoping that your presence here is gonna fast track the amendment of section twenty-five, which we have been singing for the past years. I won't be doing justice to my party if I don't thank my party because it is the one we started with this matter of amendment of section twenty-five. And I really appreciate the party for having the cardinal pillar number one, which states that expropriation of land without compensation. Chair, the expropriation bill must only happen when the section twenty-five of the Constitution is amended because this bill does not provide any fundamental legal departure from the compensation-centric expropriation that has been part of South African legal discourse since nineteen ninety-four. The provision for nil compensation is basically for derelict land that may be of no use to anyone. The bill carefully excludes land of high value from getting expropriated with nil compensation. More fundamentally, the bill still advocates for the piecemeal approach to land expropriation and will more likely be used in limited instances to settle the very few outstanding land restitution claims. It will not in any way take the struggle for the land repossession any further. I, Mana Galilian, Chairperson, I also reaffirm that expropriation of the land without compensation is the only way. All land must belong to the state, I submit. Thank you.
Good morning, frontline. My name is Atambiwe Hery Ramneniwa, Secretary of one thirty-eight. I'm representing EFF organization today. What people who are on the first row in front there, they should understand is this, we are not going back whatsoever, you like it or not, what we are looking, looking for is to get our land back without payment. You like it or not, otherwise you're gonna see how we can find it, find it back to us because it's our duty to do that. Our grandchildren gonna die without anything in their heads because of those who were stealing the land before. So, expropriation bill must only happen after section twenty-five of the Constitution has been amended. I also reaffirm- I also reaffirm that the expropriation of land without compensation, the only way, is the only way, all land must be, belong to the state, and that's a serious case, you should do that for us, and we are there for that, we are here for that. Look at my age.
Hello. My name is Pastor Jeriko Tabuano. I represent Tulamela Business Forum. So I'll speak in Venda, I'll also use my indigenous, I'll also use English also. We do support expropriation of bill, your expropriation of land bill, just because for a long time, you know, we as Africans, we've been marginalized, we were staying in the area where you find that only the PTO or permission to occupy is used. And without land, you don't have money, because money gives you, I mean, land gives you value to money. So that's why we support the compensation, because if such things won't happen, that means we won't have even equality. You'll remember even in 1910, the time Dr. Rabsana, John Lingaleva, Fukuzela Dube, people like Sol Plaki, they went to Brita, fighting for the same rights that we are fighting for today, and they came back empty-handed, they were undermined, because those who occupied the land, they knew that land is life. Let me tell you, for centuries and decades, we don't have life, just because our land has been taken, our land has been stolen. And I personally, I'll say to you guys who are here, you people who represent the Parliament, please, don't do this as usual, because you are at work. Take this issue seriously, because our grand-grandchildren, they will never accept this. We don't want to see any bloodshed, because these guys, they are on Fourth Industrial Revolution, they don't think like us, and they are not even, I mean, they cannot tolerate this. So please, all land must belong to the state, so that we can have an equal share, so that we can all share all the investment and the properties in this land. Thank you.
Dimasiari, I am DJ Ntamba. I represent two caps. First of all, I represent the African National Congress, Ward 34 branch, and I also represent Tulamela Business Forum as a coordinator. I'm here to submit the fact that both Tulamela Business Forum and the African National Congress are in agreement to the fact that the, to the appropriation of, to the, to the issue of the, of the Land Without Compensation Bill. We say so because the African people have been suffering a lot in the past due to landlessness. It is as such that they are today poor, because if you are, if you don't have land, you are poor, because you can't access, you can't get money from anybody, because those who have lands can easily go to the bank and say, we have this land, give us money to develop the land. But if you are landlessness, if you are landless, you don't have anything. So we are saying, as the African National Congress, it is there, it has been agreed in our conference that expropriation of land without compensation must be there, must take place as soon as possible, so as to empower our people. So also, as Tulamela Business Forum, we are saying, this is long overdue, because black business people have been denied the opportunity of growing, because they, you can't grow your business, all your vision and mission cannot be implemented on the air, because you need the land to implement all your vision and mission. Thank you.
Afternoon. I'm Joseph, I'm Joseph Kossar from the EFF. As the EFF, we say the land must be expropriated without compensation, and that must be done through the amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution, to allow the adoption of the Expropriation Bill. And lastly, is that this expropriated land must be at the hands of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson of the Session. I'm Mashao Patrick, Regional Chairperson of the EFF, and the PR Councilor in Vembe District. The EFF's position in the Appropriation Bill is that the bill is a waste of people's time and Parliament resources, as it seeks to remove our focus from the Constitutional Amendment of Section 25. This bill is a deliberate attempt to derail the Amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution, which once finalized, will make appropriation of land without compensation possible. All the land must be given to the people as a whole, with the state as the custodian of the land on behalf of the people. The Appropriational, the Expropriation Bill must only be done after the Constitutional Amendment of Section 25 has been concluded. We therefore reaffirm the centrality of the Constitutional Amendment process as the only route to custodianship of the land in the state. EFF calls on the Portfolio Committee to go back to Parliament to finalize the Constitutional Amendment process and stop wasting our people's time and resources. As we say, Expropriation Bill must happen after the Amendment of Section 25. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Program Director. My name is Shonisani Sigudu, District Coordinator of Kossatu in this Vembe region, and also a Chairperson of Tulamela Local Kossatu in this region too. I'm here representing Kossatu. The Congress of South African Trade Union strongly welcomes and supports the 2020 Expropriation Bill tabled by the Department of Public Works. Kossatu participated both of the bill exhaustive and inclusive net lag processes in 2013 and 2019, 2020. Kossatu's concern and inputs were dealt with satisfactorily during the net lag engagements. Kossatu supports the bill and its important legal administrative and political tool to further capacitate the government to implement the African National Congress Electoral Manifesto and its historical objective. We welcome the additional provision in the 2020 bill, providing the compensation and the nil compensation. This is critical to address, addressing the inequalities of the apartheid and colonial era, to ensuring compensation in both just and equitable, and to empower government to accelerate land reforms and infrastructure investments as needed. The replacement of the existing 1975 Act was long overdue. Expropriation is a sensitive matter, and the act need to reflect the democratic values of the 1996 Constitution. The areas of aspect that Kossatu support the Expropriation Bill wholeheartedly, we are hard, hopefully, that this will be a key legislative tool to empower our ANC-led government to implement its Electoral Manifesto and speed up radical economic transformation, and it's particular to fast-track the land reform and restitution, and to ensure that mineral and other natural resources belong and benefit all South Africans. The existing Expropriation Act was adopted in 1975 at the height of apartheid rule. It reflects those values, and it's not in line with our democratic non-racial constitution. This bill provides one over a rooting legislative and administrative framework for all expropriation processes in South Africa. Currently, there are up to 150 different pieces of law covering expropriation in the different levels of government. The key aspect that Kossatu look into as administrative aspect are as follows, the bill provides uniform fare and set processes for expropriation across South Africa, clear checks and balances to prevent abuses by government, access to legal resources through the courts for all parties feeling aggrieved on any issue, including compensation, limits to the timeframes involved to avoid cases being delayed in.
Thank you, Representative from the Parliament. My name is Joyce Masiti from Economic Freedom Fighters. I'm also a member of Vembe District Municipality Council. As EFF, we submit that Section 29 should be amended. After amending Section 29, since it is one of the cardinal pillars of the EFF, we support land distribution without compensation. The land belongs to a state, why can't you fast-track amendment? We cannot just be called yet amend again, because if I remember well, this is not for the first time. EFF wants the land to belong to the state. The land must be appropriated. Section 29 must be amended, I submit.
Thank you, Program Director. My name is Kristina Razvoni, I come from Collinschavani Municipality, I'm a councillor, I'm a member of RCT. Expropriation Bill must be only happened after Section 25 of the Constitution has been amended. I also reaffirm that the expropriation of that land without compensation is only the way, and all land must belong to the state.
Up to now, we are requesting that we should not come back to speak about the land expropriation. I submit.
Greetings to the Parliament. My name is Miranda Tendop, Vembe Region, Ward 40, Chairperson. I here represent EFF. Expropriation Bill must only happen after Section 25 of the Constitution has been amended. I also reaffirm that the expropriation of land without compensation is the only way. All land must belong to the state. I thank you.
Afternoon, everyone of you. I'm Kangala Stodo from Madumbija Zone 2, Ward 23, under the leadership of Mponi Matandani. Expropriation of land without compensation is possible, and it's more practical. It's more practical in a sense that if you can look around right now, there is no one coming from the white society who is crying for land. It's only us, we blacks. So it is possible, in a sense that if you could allow me to take you back to somewhere 1913, when the government of the day passed an act, the Native Land Act of 1913, whereby people were started to be grouped according to their races. So now, from 1913 up until today, only a black man is suffering, like myself right now, as I'm standing right now, I don't have land to stay. I'm homeless, but what has been said or what I've learned from my grandmother, they said that long time ago, they were evicted by a white man, and they left all night. So such thing is very much painful to me. So, expropriation, expropriation of land without compensation is possible thing, only if the Constitution of our country could amend or approve the Expropriation Bill, this Section 25 of the Constitution. Therefore, I hope that a black man like myself will be the happiest man in the world, and the land should be taken back to the rightful owner. Some of the people, just like myself, they're just laughing around, you are content about that. I'm crying. I thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was Walter, a member of the African National Congress, a leader of the ANC Youth League, representing 27 branches in Vembe region. I'm standing here to join the majority of people who are standing here supporting the issue of land expropriation without compensation. I support that you members of the Parliament, when you go back to the Parliament, make it a point that you are amending this Section 25, make sure that our people are getting land back. I also want to make this submission to say, it is very much important to make sure that we are taking land, we are taking this land back to its rightful owners. The majority of young people, the majority of our people in the country, they are not working today, because the government cannot be able to cover all of them. But if we have land, young people, they've got energy, young people can do something in that land. So I want to make my humble submission to say, we are ready for our land, those who took the land from our ancestors and from our grandfathers, they did not compensate them, our grandfathers got no compensation, so it's doable. If you have done that to our forefathers, we can still do it now, in a nice way. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is Netanyahu San Samuel from DA Office. As a DA, we don't support the class without compensation, because those people who draw the first, they have seen something before, or what is gonna happen if they can take the property from their owner or the lawful owners. So they've seen that before, because the property belongs to the owner, and if the owner is there, issue must be compensated. I'm happy about, because the first class in the Constitution says no one. So that no one was drawn by. So, that no one was drawn by our big guns before. So, we support that no one must take the property without compensation because the property belongs to somebody else. We are all South Africans and we must treat South Africans. So, the other issue, I see the younger brother of Zimbabwe is going to be born in South Africa because this will never grow the economy. Our land occupied from the state. People are just going there and sit. Their economy is not growing at all. So, where is the money? Those who have taken the money not worked for, bring back the money and pay back the property owner, not just to take them. I thank you.
Good day. My name is Mashatin Konrad. I'm from Democratic Alliance. I do not stand with land compensation without fund because this will affect us as a country economically and again, it will affect us on food security. We must not look at the land that is not being used previously. If a person is failing to use the land that he owns at home, what is it that is going to use at the land that they're going to give it to him? If we look according to the land that still belongs to the government and if it's still unsafe and if it's still having undevelopment, what is it that a person is going nowhere without knowledge? What is it that you're going to do with the land when you are still failing to have the land that you have? The land must have compensation if we still, we must still have to look at the land that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. I am informed that there are people that came from outside and they were directed to sit there, that want to speak. Can you raise your hands then? At least you are not many, can you just come? Challenge is that I'm saying those are sitting on that side and you are coming from the side that I already pointed. Okay, that is the last group that will entertain, then will entertain coming from outside again. Okay, the rules are that it's only three minutes. You introduce yourself and then state the party or the organization that you're coming from and then present your view on the expropriation bill.
Thank you Chair. My name is Rolani Judas Lungwani. I'm from Collins Chavani Municipality. I'm here to represent the people. I believe that this is not a political gathering, but a political input has to be needed by the politicians. So, I'm here to say I'm very much ashamed that we are in the twenty-seventh year after the attainment of democracy in South Africa. We are in the twenty-eighth year after the slain of Chris Hany who fought for the land of this country. Here we are being held at ransom by the white person fighting against us when we want our land. It is unfortunate that yesterday marked the hundred and fifty years after the death of Charlotte Matlak who fought for the land of this country. Here we are still sitting, fighting for the very same land. It's unfortunate that a day before yesterday, we were celebrating and thinking and also mourning the death of Solomon Matlango forty-two years down the line. We are still sitting down here wasting the state's resources, conducting the so-called public participation, fighting for somebody, fighting for, whilst some people have died for this. The blood of Solomon Matlango has spoken on our behalf. The blood of Chris Hany have spoken on our behalf. There's nothing that we are here sitting for. We are sitting here to tell you, go back to National Assembly and pass the amendment bill in the constitution of our republic. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you Honorable Chairperson. My name is Hendrik Asindinwele. I'm here representing Tulamela Municipality, under the Civil Society and the Chairperson of Gender Forum. The Civil Society in Tulamela, we support the expropriation of land without compensation. This will enable our society to recover their forefathers' land, which was taken free of charge. We also, as the Civil Society, want the lease agreement to be granted to all residents, irregardless of color and race. Imagine a citizen getting a pension. For example, here in Vembe, we have got a leading company called Z Z Two. That person, she grew a doctor and a nurse and an educator. While she come back or he comes back from home, they don't get the amendment of the section twenty-five. I thank you.
Chairperson, we need to state first and foremost that we do not know why parliament has decided to conduct yet another process dealing with expropriation. While you have not yet concluded the amendment of the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. This bill is a destruction process. The provision that only is an insult to African people. Why have you excluded high-value agricultural and residential land from getting expropriated without compensation? Black people in this country need all their land. In particular, high-value agricultural and urban land for agricultural production, human settlement and industrial development. The expropriation bill that must come after the amendment of the constitution must reflect these realities. So, listen to this. The EFF instructs the portfolio committee to go back to parliament to finalize the constitutional amendment process and stop wasting our people's time and resources. I reject the bill as it seeks to detail the most fundamental process of taking land back to the people in order to restore the dignity of the African people. I submit.
Good day Chairperson and the media and the members of parliament. My name is Councillor Mararo Mashatini from Democratic Alliance Tulamela Municipality. I'm also the youth leader of the D A in Vembe. I'm here, we are not supporting land expropriation without compensation simply because there is nothing currently which is safe in the government's end. Can we talk about Zondo Commission for a moment? There is a lot which is happening there. What do you want to happen about our land? We cannot and we can never allow government to loot while we are watching. Let us not mislead our people because this land, government doesn't want it for the people. What about the portion that the government is owning now? Why are they not giving us that land? Why are they promising us the land that they know that if we are going for that land, there will be civil unrest? Do you want people to die on the street? The answer could be no if you are a caring government. So, we don't support this land without compensation because even yourself, if I'm coming to you and to you, you won't allow me without compensation. So, we are not supporting it and we are not shy about it. And let's not, please, let's not put color in front of this matter. This matter is about land, it's not about color. If you are saying about color, why are you saying that? Why are we not talking about the matter? The matter is that we don't support it and we will never support it. Let us, the government, give us that land that they are owning now. Let them not promise us because we will remind them about Zondo Commission. Now we are having an ex-president who is defying it, not going there. So, what about the land? Do you want to steal more? Are you not satisfied? Please be satisfied for what you have stolen already. Let's not put unrest. Thank you.
My name is Johnson Mukeli from Chakuma Business Forum. I'm here to represent the organization. My submission is that land has been taken from its indigenous people, so it must be returned to them without any compensation. I submit that you return to the parliament and pass the bill for the land to return to its normality since God is angry with us of the things that are happening. Hence, we are having so many challenges like they. The issue of land expropriation should have been done during the first parliament in nineteen ninety-four. Mister Mandela was the president. We have been given the cooling off time. So, what I am saying is that let us return the land to the rightful owners who are the blacks. South Africa belongs to the black people. Thank you.
Thank you Chairperson. Greetings to the parliament. I'm Mesimakadu from Tulamela, representing the Economic Freedom Fighters. We as EFF, I'm here to support the bill of expropriation. Expropriation on bill must only happen after section twenty-five of the constitution has been amended. I also reaffirm that the expropriation of land is the only way. I think all must belong to the state. I submit. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Elimele Mungoni. I'm a PR Councillor from Tulamela. I'm here to support the bill saying that section twenty-five should be, section twenty-five should be sped up so that the land can be actioned. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Muyawa Sere. I'm sent here by the African National Congress. We all know that the arrival of a white man in South Africa, there were indigenous people in our country, overpiling land dispossession took place upon the arrival of a white man. So, we now, in restoring the dignity of our people, we saying land should be taken back to the indigenous people. We support the expropriation bill twenty-twenty so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries of old national grievances of land property and forced dispossession which took place then. We support the framework in the bill, in line with the constitution, to guide the process and procedure for expropriation of the property, including the land and organs of state. We so submit. I thank you.
Afternoon everybody. My name is Thomas. I represent the sub-district of Communist Party in Collins Chavani Municipality. I am here representing the branches of the Communist Party from Collins Chavani. As a Communist Party, we strongly believe that the expropriation of land, that is the right way which our people can get the access of something that they never get in the future. We believe, we strongly believe that it is the only way. The poor and the working class of this country will start to believe and understand that no, it is true, the government is working for the people. We cannot sit and fold the hand and see that our people are suffering and waiting for something that we cannot understand and see. That's why the party is supporting this bill hundred percent. We strongly believe that it is the only way that the government can start that the government can start to achieve and the people can start to benefit and get the fruit of this country. Thank you very much.
I'm my manager Betty from Colins Chavani Municipality, Sasa Solomon. The expropriation bill must only happen after section twenty-five of the Constitution has been amended. And also you must fast track that the bill must amended with immediately effect. As, hence, it has been long time saying this, yeah. All land must belong to the state. Black people has got missed the section twenty-five of the Constitution. I think.
Thank you very much. My name is Kangelan Mangai from Colins Chavani in a village called Olifansuk, a village that became because of land deposition. We believe and support the amendment of the section twenty-five in the Constitution as the ANC because we believe that it will redress the historical injustices of the nineteen thirteen land act. The availability of land in the hands of the majority of our people which can be used for human settlement and commensial purposes will speed up in addressing the triple challenges facing our society, which is unemployment, poverty and inequality. Thank you very much.
Masiarri. My name is Rose Nyazani from ward forty under the Municipality of Wembe. Expropriation bill must only happen after the section of twenty-five. Constitution has been amended. Number two. I also reaffirm that the expropriation of the land without compensation is the only way. Number three. All land must belong to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jane Gabara, representing the African National Congress. The ANC supports the appropriation of property and land as just as equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to the property and land and that expropriation of such without compensation is a part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and the oppression of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock the growth, redistribute assets and promote social economic transformation. The ANC program provides a way to address the land and question and build productive assets for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states expropriation of land without compensation should be amongst the key mechanism available to the government to give the effective to the land reform and redistribution. We submit that in line with the Constitution of Republic and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that we allow under a certain circumstance approximately of the property and land without compensation. We support the appropriation bill for twenty-twenty so as the distributing property and land to address the century of old nation grievances of land and property force deposition. We support the framework in the bill in line with Constitution to guide the process and produce for approval of the property, including the land and organs of the state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allow the expropriation without compensation may be just equitable in terms of Constitution and in the public interest of the property and land earmark for social economic reform and distribution. We support that for the expression authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose must determine those instance when the compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, when no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C. That is the function of the government, not the court. And if anyone has a grievancy, they have the right to approach the court. The court cannot be the one to make the determination of compensation or not compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolebuka. Honorable Timmy is trying to educate me here. Thank you to all those that have made presentation. As we have seen, we have recorders here. We are recording each and every presentation that is made to us today. We're going to take it and then when we are discussing as the committee, we will discuss your presentations, the return submissions, the oral submissions that have been made and come up with a text that we will agree as the committee, which will be presented to the Parliament on the issue of the expropriation bill. All the presentations that have been made to us here, we are taking them seriously, all of them. There is no one that is better than the other. We all treating them equally and we will discuss accordingly. But we would like to make a differentiation here. Is that we are not the ad hoc committee that came for the amendment of section twenty-five. We are here only for the expropriation bill, which is repealing Act number sixty-three of nineteen seventy-five. Tomorrow will be in Zanin, Lenyenye. I hope that I'm pronouncing it correctly. Lenyenye Community Hall in Zanin to do the public hearings on the expropriation bill number twenty-three of twenty-twenty. Thank you, dear Lebuka.